Okay, I would like to call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker.
Here.
Mr. Corangelo.
Here.
Mr. Sizmar.
Here.
Mr. Cummings.
Here.
Ms. Gwos.
Here.
Mr. Hong.
Here.
Mrs. Reese. Mr. Winston.
Here.
And President Lacks.
Here, we have a quorum. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the East Brunswick Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for a later broadcast. It is a policy of the Board of Education that videotape meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. We're going to go right into closed session, whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion at a public meeting, and these subjects are within the exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act and are permitted to be discussed in closed session. The Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, those items listed on tonight's agenda. The length of closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the Board shall reconvene and action will be taken. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education will recess into closed session for only the aforementioned subjects, and be it further resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education hereby declares that its discussion of the aforementioned subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Moved by Mrs. Becker, second by Mr. Corangelo. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Absentions? Motion carries. Thank you. We are in closed. We shall see you in approximately an hour. Welcome back, everybody. Before we begin the business part of this evening, I would like to ask everyone to please rise. As many of you have heard, we lost our beloved Dr. Joanne Magistro, former superintendent of the district, so we'd like to do a moment of silence. Thank you. At the end of the meeting, for the good of the cause for the Board, just because I don't want to go out of order too much, if some of the Board members want to give any remembrances of Joanne, we can talk about that later, but I'm just going to ask if we hold off on that, just to get through to Board business, starting with Dr. Valeski, Superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Lacks, and good evening, everyone. Last week, we welcomed over eighty new staff members to our district. During new staff orientation, participants were welcomed by our administrative team, treated to lunch by EBEA, participated in choice learning centers, and worked side-by-side with their mentors. Teacher leaders worked with new staff to acquaint them with East Brunswick best practices. We are off to a great start and a great school year, and I can say that I think that we're, except for a few outliers, we're already staffed, right? On Tuesday, August 29th, the high school counseling department welcomed over 120 seniors to get a kickstart on completing their common application for college. Students were guided through each section of completing their application and were provided with tips and answers to so frequently asked questions, like, "How are my parents going to pay for this?"
Are you looking at me?
The event was well attended, and many seniors left feeling ahead of the game and the busy application season ahead of them. In that evening of Tuesday, August 29th, to conclude the last day of band camp, the East Brunswick Marching Band gave their premier parent performance. After having spent eight hours a day for the past eight days learning the music and marching drills, this was the group's first performance of the full marching band show. This year's group is over eighty students strong. The last time the marching band was this large was well over a decade ago, so that's significant.
Wow, that is nice.
This is a testament to the hard work and dedication which continues to grow the program by head marching band director, Brian Toth, and the entire East Brunswick Marching Band staff. Congratulations to the group on a stellar performance, and we are looking forward to a fantastic upcoming season. Just a reminder, it's coming. The first day of school for all students is next Wednesday, September 6th. Wish everyone a successful school year with many great memories. And we had our first administrative meeting this morning, so that's usually the kickoff, and that's the sign that we're about to open the doors and students are about to arrive, so look forward to a great year. Thank you.
Lots of happy parents.
Yeah.
Some happy kids, but mostly happy parents. Thank you, Dr. Valeski. We have a couple of presentations this evening. First up, Dr. Bowley is going to give us a presentation on the 2022-2023 Assessment and Achievement Report, which you should all have at your seats.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I will be presenting on four assessments that were administered last spring for our students. The New Jersey GPA, Graduation Proficiency Assessment, the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, the DLM, the Dynamic Learning Maps, and the WEDA Access for Ls Assessment. So it is important to note that at the time of testing, approximately 25% of our student population was eligible for either an IEP, a 504, or ESL services, and approximately 20% of our student population qualified as economically disadvantaged, including 1% housing insecure. So the Access for Ls, ACCESS stands for Assessing Comprehension and Communication in English, State to State. This is a state-mandated assessment, and it is administered to our students in grades K through 12 who qualify for ESL services, and even those students who qualify and refuse their parents refuse the services, which we had seventeen of those students last year. The scoring and proficiency, as you can see here, the students receive scores in listening, speaking, reading, and writing, as well as an overall score, and the indicators are entering, emerging, developing, expanding, bridging, and reaching. Once students receive a score of a 4.5, they are exited from the ESL program. This slide gives us a little more information about our ESL program and our students. As we know, East Brunswick is a wonderfully diverse and multilingual community. Three thousand of our students in the district, about 38%, speak 70 languages besides English at home. All students in the district, when they are registered, if on the home language survey a parent indicates that another language other than English is spoken at home, that student will be screened for ESL services. The top three languages spoken here in this district are Arabic, Spanish, and Chinese, with Ukrainian coming in as fourth. And in the green boxes, we can see the ESL students who are continuing on into the program, the length of time they've been in the program and receiving ESL services, and the bottom box shows us those students who have exited from the ESL program and the length of time that they had been in the program. We can see a couple to a few years is about average. One last piece, it is important to note also that our ESL program grew by 21% last school year. We had 275 students, and it has grown to 332 students. So here on this heat map, we can see the results of our Access for Ls proficiency by grade level. Highlights here are looking at that entering kindergarten group, that 20 students there. At time of registration, they were assessed to require ESL services. We can also see that the majority of our Ls are grouped in the emerging and expand, developing and expanding categories, those three and fours, and the majority of our students, about 54% of our Ls, are in the elementary grades. This is the same information with some key insights, just highlighting that 21% growth in the ESL program last school year, and looking at the grades 7 through 12, that 5% growth there. Moving on to the NJGPA, the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment. This assessment is administered to our 11th graders last spring. It's assessing on Algebra I, Geometry, and 10th grade English standards. This is the second year, last spring was the second year we had administered this assessment. The year prior, you recall, was the field test. And the score range on this assessment is 650 through 850, and recently, the New Jersey Department of Education voted to lower the passing score from a 750 to a 725. And the scores here are determining if a student, the 11th graders, are graduation-ready or not yet graduation-ready. So the NJGPA for English, we can see that we significantly improved our score from last year, and we are higher, much higher than the New Jersey average proficiency. So we're seeing here in the dark green that 91% of our students prove to be graduation-ready according to this assessment. However, 96% of the same group of students had already met their graduation requirements through an alternate pathway such as PSAT, SAT, or the NJSLA. To the right, we're seeing some nice growth in all of our subgroups, and we continue to watch our English language learners. Our NJGPA in mathematics. Again, we see a slight increase from last year, which is significantly higher than the state proficiency. However, although it is at 75%, 96% of our students had already met this requirement in some other, with some other pathways, such as the PSAT, SAT, or NJSLA. It is important to note that this assessment was assessing children on Algebra I and Geometry content, and so these students last year were in 11th grade, and many of them had taken Algebra I in 8th grade, and now they're in 11th grade, and so that was three years later. And also, many of them were enrolled in Algebra I and Geometry during the pandemic. Our subgroup performance, to the right, you can see, we're seeing growth here, and we're going to definitely continue to pay attention to our disparity in certain subgroups. Next is our New Jersey SLA, or New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. This test is administered in English Language Arts. Students in grades 3 through 9 get their grade-level exam. Math, students get their grade-level exam in grades 3 through 8 unless they're enrolled in Algebra I or Geometry or Algebra II, and then they're taking those exams. Under the scoring and proficiency at the bottom, you can see that the scoring is relatively inconsistent. The students would be considered proficient when they receive a level of 4 or 5, except on the Geometry and Algebra II assessment, a level 3 is also considered proficient. Our SLA for ELA proficiency by grade level. We have increased in every grade level. Overall proficiency is 70% district, above the state average. We have increased from last year, three points there, and increased at every grade level except a slight one-point drop in 6th grade and steady progress in 7th grade. And 5th grade showed nice gains with a nine-point improvement over last year. This slide, I threw in for fun. The prior slide, you can see are overall, the students who earned a 4 or 5 and were considered proficient. This slide I wanted to capture in the yellow, those students who are approaching grade-level expectations, right on the cusp. Our focus this year will be to give them that little extra support so that they can boost up and meet grade-level expectations. So the green are the students who have already demonstrated proficiency, and the yellow is the percentage of students who are right there on the cusp. And in the chart at the bottom, you could see what would be our overall proficiency as we provide this support to the students. Now we have our ELA proficiency by school. When you see, the gray is the 2022, and the green is the 2023. It is important to note that in 2022, the results included the 5th grade in the elementary schools, so any increases or decreases could be more pronounced without that cohort of students in the building. And the same assessment broken down for our subgroup. Take a look at our subgroup proficiency. We have seen growth in all subgroups except for one. We see our females continue to outperform our males in the Language Arts, although the males did make significant gains, 4% over the last year. Another area of progress was our ESL population, who are historically disadvantaged in the English Language Arts exam. Although we saw a 21% increase in the ESL population, the group as a whole increased proficiency by 11%. As we continue to look deeply at the subgroups, we do know that some of our students are represented in multiple categories. Moving on to mathematics, our NJSLA proficiency by grade level. We have seen a district-wide increase by five points. We've seen improved math proficiency in every grade level where envisioned math was introduced. 3rd grade improved by three, 4th grade improved by two points, 5th grade, which was lower proficiency last year, increased by an impressive 11 points, and 6th grade increased by four points. Here, we have the same slide, proficiency by performance level. Again, the students in the green have demonstrated proficiency and met grade-level expectations, and those in the yellow are approaching grade-level expectations. So hopefully, with that little extra boost and little extra support, we can get them to meet grade-level expectations. Here, we're looking at our SLA for mathematics by school. Seven of 11 of our schools raised their proficiency over last school year. Again, some of the pieces may be skewed with the 5th grade being removed from those elementary schools in comparison. And mathematics, broken down by subgroup proficiency. We do see raised achievement in math for all of our subgroups. And we'll continue to address disparities, especially among our economically disadvantaged students with disabilities and our English language learners. Our NJSLA for science. This test was administered to our 5th, 8th, and 11th graders. Here again, the grading is a little different than the others. A student needs a performance level of at least a 3 to achieve proficiency. This is still a relatively new exam. This is only our third administration of the exam. Our secondary science supervisor, Ms. De Benedetti, is on the state committee for this exam, and the committee is reminding districts that they are still making adjustments to this exam, including the formatting, question selection, and scoring. Here's our NJSLA science proficiency by grade and school. We have seen a slight increase in performance. We see growth in five of the subgroups. And although the scoring is still being adjusted for this exam, it is important to note that students in 8th and 11th grade missed two years of lab, lab-based science, during the pandemic, which may have impacted their proficiency. Also, this test tests students on biology, earth science, and physics, although not all of our students have taken physics by the time they've taken this exam. And we can see our middle, middle school proficiency here, according to the overall state, although the overall state proficiency is 24% in middle school, the state passing rate is 18%. So adjustments are still being made for this exam. And last is our DLM, or Dynamic Learning Maps. This assessment is administered to students with disabilities who qualify for this alternative assessment in accordance with their IEPs. This assessment is administered to students in grades 3 through 8 and 11 for English Language Arts. Math is 3 through 8 and 11, and science is grades 5, 8, and 11. Here's our Dynamic Learning Maps, or DLM, proficiency by grade level. You see the categories of emerging, approaching, at target, and advanced for English Language Arts, math, and science. And to note, the number of students participating in the DLM raised from 56 students the year prior to 92 students last year. And here's the year-to-year comparison. With the 36 new students tested for DLM last school year, we are seeing a greater number of students receiving special education services who need more support in these areas. In science, we did see a 13% growth. So in conclusion, this slide is a visual, as we continue identifying and supporting the academic needs of our students, we see here the tiered support that we are providing. These assessments that I just reported to you on only tell a piece of our students' total emotional and academic well-being, and the results are encouraging, and we are very proud of the achievements that our students have made on these assessments, and we're committed to ensuring that every student feels supported and has all that he or she needs to achieve to the best of their ability.
Thank you, Dr. Bowley.
Thank you.
This is very, very well put together, and I'm happy to hear that we're doing as well as we are, especially the math round makes me feel a little bit better considering the rocky start it's had. I have one question for you. The ELA, that was the one, if you, the one outlier, the 62%, 38%, the proficiency on the third page. Third, fourth page. The English Language Arts, graduation-ready?
Yes.
Is that remnants of COVID on the ELA area? Because that was a huge jump. There's some little dips and ups and downs, but this one, we went from 62% to 91%? So is that what we're?
You know, the first year was a field test.
Mm-hmm.
So they worked out some of the kinks on the assessment and re-administered that assessment this year for us.
Okay, because I know the mathematics only went up by a point. I'm just saying, I just thought that was a particularly large jump, that's why I wasn't sure.
It really is, it really is.
Look, I'm thrilled. 91% is excellent. Okay. I see questions.
Okay.
Mr. Corangelo.
Thank you for your great presentation. I love you as usual. I have a question regarding the, it says the English Language Arts. We went from 20% of the IEPs to 65, which is a pretty good jump, but on the next slide, it says IEPs for mathematics, we only went up one point. So can you explain why?
Are we in the SLA, the NJSLA?
Yeah, no, the NJGPA.
GPA, okay.
So I'm noticing that the IEPs, they went up from 2022 to 23, decent amount from 20% to 65.
Yes.
But I don't see a jump in the mathematics. Can you please explain how we're going to support the students in maybe achieving a little bit better?
Yes, in the mathematics?
Yes, please.
Yes. So it's important to note that in the math department, we are adopting a new math program and online resources to support 7th grade up through 10th grade mathematics. We're also working with the building administration to provide smaller class sizes and team teaching and after-school tutoring and diving deep into the data for each student to ensure that we are putting in place everything that every child needs to be successful.
So we assume that next year, that will be like 70%?
Or 100%.
Ah, thank you.
Mrs. Becker.
Where to start? Trying to make some sense of the global purpose, intent, and implementation by the state, and maybe that's my first mistake. So my question has to do with the subgroups. First of all, any of the pages where there's a breakout of the subgroup proficiency students, and there are several groups within the subgroup. If a child, like, I'll, let's just take three of them to make it easy, an economically disadvantaged subgroup, English language learner subgroup, and a student with disability subgroup. If a child falls into more than one of these, or even all three, are they listed two or three times? They are.
They're counted, yes.
Uh-huh, okay. The Dynamic Learning Maps. This is a subgroup for a subgroup in the sense that it's only administered to students with disabilities who qualify for the alternative assessment?
Yes. These are students who are not, wouldn't benefit from taking the grade-level assessment with their peers. They're taking this alternative assessment based on their IEP and their programming and based on the input from their child study team.
Just, just one more question, Joyce, thank you. There was something in here about infrastructure and practice tests. An infrastructure trial and practice test were delivered to students in grade 3 to 9 to help students prepare for the state assessment. So I'm not quite sure what an infrastructure trial is, but I'm also just curious, and I don't know, I don't expect you to necessarily have this number to be able to quantify it tonight, so please feel free to say, "Vic, I have no idea, I'll get back to you." How much time approximately, classroom time, is spent on the infrastructure trials, whatever those are, and the practice tests?
Approximately 20 minutes.
20 minutes a day?
No, once.
Once?
Trying to make sure that we can all log on, log in, get into the system.
So that's the infrastructure, so it's like a logistical?
Yes.
And the practice tests?
It's, it's part of logging in and navigating the system.
So they're not actually given a, a practice test, like you could buy an SAT workbook and take a practice SAT?
It's not part of the curriculum, but some teachers, I'm not sure.
No, that's fine, that's fine. So 20 minutes?
For the infrastructure, yes.
And the practice tests, however long it takes?
I mean, we have tests taking genres in some of the curriculum areas where students are exposed to how to approach a certain type of question.
I'm not, I'm not upset with you or our district at all. I just happen to be under the humble opinion that all our children are overtested, and the amount of time it takes away from the valuable work in the classroom is crying shame, and I think I should stop there.
Agreed. Mrs. Gwos.
I do have questions, but I want to piggyback off of what you were saying, having participated in an inf- Having participated in infrastructure tests over and over again, it really is to just get everyone, at least my experience has been, it's to get everyone online at the same time to weed out the problems before actual testing, which I think decreases the student stress. But the other thing is, I know that most of the practice that happens there is to teach the students how to use the tools as part of the test, not so much actual practice problems.
I, you won't get an argument from me.
I did have a question, and it may be redundant. I think it's about the fifth page. It's the NJGPA mathematics with the subgroup breakdown.
Yes.
So we have a small drop in score for our Hispanic Latino, for our white students, and for our economically disadvantaged.
Yes.
It's really hard to know how significant those percentages are because we don't have, am I understanding this right? We don't have the number of students that were tested in 2022. So the numbers after those students are for 2023, right?
Correct.
Okay. So it's small, but I just wanted to ask again, because that's high school, so that wouldn't come under Envision. That's not the new math curriculum.
No.
What are we doing to strengthen the math, the math curriculum or strengthen test, or strengthen our students to prepare for this? Because even the small drops, I'm sure you've come up with things to do.
As I was sharing, we have big ideas. A new math program with all of the online resources in our secondary buildings. We are working with the building administration to make sure class sizes are small. We have team teaching in certain classrooms. We're providing after-school tutoring and working with the building principal and the supervisor to really dig into this data to ensure that we're meeting the needs of the students.
That's great, thank you. Mr. Winston.
Dr. Bowley, thank you very much. You know, I look forward to this presentation every year. So I'm glad I showed up here tonight. A couple of questions for you. Knowing our job is not to run the district, but to assure the district runs well, I ask you the same question now, this will be the fourth year in a row. I imagine you anticipate it coming. What is your takeaway from this? And where do you see the areas of opportunity, areas we should celebrate? What happens next now that you have this information?
I did anticipate it because it's a great question. I think that at this point, we have all the things that we need. I think we need to continue to hone the skills of our people and ensure that they have the cutting-edge professional development and learning to make sure they're on their A-game at all times, including our teachers, our math and reading specialists, our instructional coaches, building administration, supervisors, up to myself. I think that at this time, we need to continue to work collaboratively with building administrators so that they can support the needs of the families so that the children have their needs met and are available for learning in the classroom. And I think that, you know, we need a little more time. We're seeing gains from COVID, from our, the learning gaps from COVID, learning interruptions. And I anticipate that we will continue to do great things and see great things from our children.
All right, and just one follow-up. Thank you very much. And you mentioned professional development, which is the perfect segue into my next question. In looking at the NJSLA English Language Arts history, going back eighteen, year of 2018, 19, 22, and 23, 18 and 19 were considerably higher, nearly 10% difference in return, but not percentage points. And then the same result is true within mathematics. 18 and 19 were higher than 22 and 23. I do know that COVID has become, you know, a, an answer when seeing this. But in terms of professional development, you mentioned it, so I'm going to ask about it. What professional development do you have in place now so we can put COVID, in fact, behind us and start seeing positive returns from where we were? I think we've taken a step backwards that I really didn't anticipate prolonged into two full years.
Right. So I would say that number one, our student population is a lot different from 2018. That being said, we are working with our supervisors to provide sheltered instruction, professional development for all of our teachers, which will make the content more comprehensible for ESL students who are in all of the classrooms. We're adopting new K-2 reading units of study, and that'll be rolled out this school year, which incorporate a lot of the science of reading to provide a balanced approach to literacy instruction. We have, we're going into year two of the Envision Math, which has shown great gain, you know, great gains in the first year. So in year two, we'll only be getting stronger and better. Adopting the secondary math new program, I think will really show us great output next, next school year.
Good. And last comment that I'll make is I did see the recent poll. I believe it was USA, USA Today, putting us in the top 8% in the state.
US News.
US News, I'm sorry. And that is a reflection, I think, on the things that you've been doing over the last couple of years. So I just wanted to compliment and appreciate the work you've been doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karan, for the follow-up.
Thank you very much for your nice presentation. And I have three comments and two questions for you. So I'm, so I don't, I'm not very happy with the NJDOE lowered the score from 750 to 725. You know, we're here to educate our children, to prepare for their future. I don't know why they lowered their standard. I don't know what's the rationale they do it, but I'm very disappointed for that. So we should help our students raise the bar, prepare them well for their future. So I just don't get it. Okay, as Jeff pointed out, NJAP. So we didn't reach the pre-COVID level yet. I know you guys are working very hard, but all the data point to NJSLA is either math, language art, everything. We're still lower, even further lower than this percentage pre-COVID level. I know you guys are working hard, but please try your best. At least get our students to the pre-COVID number, and then go higher. There's a lot of things for you to do. I'm here waiting for you guys to make the improvement. Number three, so our science proficiency is much higher than the state. We have 45, 43%. The state is 24%. I'm not happy for this number because science is the future of this country. You know, we are going so, so low. We are now, we shouldn't be proud of 43% of first, 24%. We need to work harder, Dr. Valeski. We need to work harder to improve our science education. This is very important. We have to compete. We have, as a country, how? We need to start from here, prepare our students, improve our science program. This is my comment. And then I have questions. So last year, I realized the cheating performance is lower than other elementary schools. This year again, so cheating is lower than others' elementary. I just want to know if anything you guys want to do to help the cheating community to improve the cheating school? This is number one question. You don't need to tell me the answer now, but I hope you guys work on it. Question number two, for the ELL, the kindergarteners, we had, this year, we have 47 students coming to our school district. They need a language assistance. I don't know if you guys have a sign historical data, how many students previous years come with language assistance need? Additionally, I want to know, among those students, how many come with either five or four plan or IEP? Because those data can provide us a snapshot how our students come to this school district. So you, you don't need to come up, answer my question now, but please take a look. So that will help us to develop our teaching strategy, even the facility development. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Karan, if you have.
Okay, so without saying the wrong thing, when you said that you had a new math program, and again, we were at 26%, went to 27, how are we assured that the teachers are getting the proper training to roll that out?
Training started last, last school year, continued over the summer, and then next, tomorrow will be a full day of training as well.
So we feel as a district that we will improve in the teacher ability to present the material?
Yes.
I don't want to say the whole thing, but.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Glass.
I have some follow-up questions to Mr. Hong's. The science test in the two years he was referring to, is that still considered a field test?
No, it's not a test now.
Okay.
But the scoring is a moving target.
Okay. My other question was, I had read, I believe, but this isn't my area. I had read that the score was lowered just to match the standard for other standardized tests, that it wasn't comparable to other standardized tests for a passing rate. Is that, I really don't know.
Yes, and again, some of these test scores are a moving target. Some are three, four, and five for a passing. Some are just four and five for a passing.
Thank you so much.
And then they can change.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Sizmar, sorry.
That's okay, just a quick comment. I think what we have to realize is, if you're building something, you have to make sure you have an accurate ruler. I'm not a test writer, but we're, you know, the, things are going very well in the district, I think. I see by our graduates where they're going. You know, we're blessed with the ones that sit up here on the dais with us. I'm amazed, I'm blown away. So I'm not one that puts so much emphasis on this ruler because I don't know if it's 100% accurate down to the millimeters. And I think, Ms. Becker, yeah, I think you were kind of leading that way, but I just say.
I wasn't leaning, I was dropping bricks.
Yeah, I just, you know, I think, it was a great presentation, and I don't know.
I mean, it reminds me of our conversation last year, this time about Start Strong, which just totally went away, just like that.
I just had one, do you mind? Just one more quick question. I think this is, oh, no, it's okay. Very impressive and really a testament to the great work that's occurring here across, you know, each of these academic institutions. It's really, really solid. Do we track other metrics outside of, you know, what comes through this report? And if so, do they align? I mean, overall, this is very positive. Do they align with a similar trajectory?
Yes, for the most part, they do. Our teachers keep a lot of formative and summative data on students throughout the school year. And it's informative, and it informs their teaching and their planning. You know, this data is, is great and a high level. But, you know, presenting this to you now about a teacher's class that they had last year is a little too late.
Now, Mr. Sizmar, actually, that was an incredible point because I love the fact that we are always looking at the data and trying to course correct and do everything better based on what we're finding. But that's a great point, where our kids go to school and the success levels of the kids that leave us. And I look about, when we went to school, you know, I thought I went to a good school. My daughter graduated last year, and I couldn't even step on the doorsteps of her school. And so, I mean, that really does say something about the academics here. And sometimes these testing doesn't necessarily do justice to our students. So you're right, you're right. Thank you for this, thank you for this report. Much appreciated. Did you want to?
I just think that later this year, we'll have to bring the Waxman Scholars in, and we'll have to have them demonstrate to the board. And that'll reaffirm your, your confidence in the sciences, Mr. Hong. So a lot of our students are still interested in sciences and do quite well and compete at the highest levels for very coveted spots at colleges and universities.
As I said, you guys are doing a great job. But we have to keep raising our bar instead of be happy with what I have. We, East Bronx, we are paying so high property tax. People come here for good education. And I believe they want their children achieve higher, higher, getting better and better. So maybe because I have a very strong science background, maybe. But I realize science is so important. So this, you know, science can change a people's life. Science can change a nation, a nation's situation. It's very important. But it's very unfortunate today. State produce, state set up the test is a ruler. Before we change the ruler, we have to measure ourselves against it. We can now say, okay, I don't like the rule, I throw it away. Before the state changes, we have to follow it. We have to use our, what I have to against that one. But it's my opinion, so I insist.
I think my comment was, the accuracy of the ruler is important, not how we're measured against it. So if, you know, we can't, we can't assume a ruler is accurate just because the state, and especially historically, let's try this, gets thrown away. Let's try this for a year, lasts a year and a half. Some other company comes in. I'm sorry, I think our achievement level is a better ruler to measure where East Bronx District is going, not these state tests that change from year to year.
Mrs. Becker.
I just, sorry, I need to say, yes, absolutely. And I actually love the suggestion, Dr. Valeski, about the Walkman, Lockton Scholars. I believe, I'd love to see more project-based assessments, portfolio-based assessments, collaborative group-based assessments. We talk about training the trainer. Our kids do that. They get opportunities to do that, where they can teach their peers. This is, these are the things that, I understand the necessity of this, but these are the things that I think that measure, that measure is a metaphor mark that you were using, we, we can't see enough of. Bring it on.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bowley.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Year up. Mr. Julian is going to give us.
You're not doing 73 pages, are you?
No, enrollment update grades K through four, class sections.
Seventy-two.
And capacity.
Good evening. So this evening, we'll be going through an enrollment update. And we'll be going, doing an overview of the class sections in grades K to four as well as school capacities at the elementary level. All right, Karen, we're going to need your help. Should I blink every time I need this to move along? Okay, thank you. So first off, I want to talk about the components that go into determining the number of seats available for students across a broad spectrum of programs. Those components would be, and what we've used in our analysis are the following. The Department of Education Facility Efficiency Standards. Those standards are used whenever the Department of Education is looking at what facility needs may be necessary or may be requested by a school district, looking at capacity that exists versus what, what may be coming down the road. The next one is Special Education Legal Requirements. The New Jersey Administrative Code sets forth very specific requirements in terms of how many students can occupy a classroom in each of the special education self-contained programs. And then the last one is the Board Policy. Board Policy 2312 sets forth what the maximum class sizes would be at kindergarten, which is 22, and in grades one through 12, which is 25. So, not yet, not ready to move yet. One of the things I want to highlight, because this is important, and we'll see this a little bit later. Not all classrooms are created alike, right? So, you know, they're not all the same square footage. And so they can't all house the same number of students. The analysis that we've gone through looks at every single space against every one of these criteria. So I want to set that as a benchmark as we go into this a little bit further. Now, setting a cap on class size alone does not take into account the actual classroom spaces, as I've said. And so you're going to see those distinctions as we move forward. Applying the standards to ascertain the number of seats available, I believe, improves the equity in the learning environment. We have a classroom that is, let's say, 500 square feet for 20 students versus a classroom that is 800 square feet for 20 students, the environment's going to be much different. A can of sardines versus more space to be able to, to learn and do other activities. So now we can move forward, please. On this chart, I talked about the various standards. So this chart provides the efficiency standards, the DOE efficiency standards, and the administrative code requirements. You'll see in the first few lines, kindergarten, the standard is 900 square feet for 21 students. That computes to 43 square feet per student. Grades one through three, 850 square feet for the classroom, and that equates over to 40 square feet per student. Grade four, 800 square feet for the classroom, 35 square feet per person. We used those metrics in analyzing each of our spaces, the square footage per student. And then below that, we have the self-contained programs. According to the administrative code, we see what the enrollments that are permissible within each of those programs. Now, we don't have every one of these, but I thought it was important to provide an all-inclusive list that's reflective of what's in the administrative code. Most of these, with the exception of the pre-K, and I believe the preschool disabled program, are all based off of a 600-square-foot classroom. That's what is reflected in the efficiency standards, and so that translates over into what that square footage is for each student within each of the programs. Excuse me. And you'll see, for example, in the autism program at the elementary level, maximum of six students at 100 square feet per student. So just to kind of guide you through what that means. Somebody might ask, what do those parenthetic numbers mean? The parenthetic numbers are the thresholds at which an instructional assistant is required in the classroom. So the non-parentetic number in the special ed self-contained is self-contained class with a teacher, the parenthetic numbers is where you must add a instructional assistant to the classroom. So let's go into the district-wide enrollment summary. This chart was updated as of yesterday's data, looking at what our school opening enrollment is, based on all of our enrollments as of yesterday, and also comparing against the projected enrollment that we had prepared several months back, and which served the basis during our budget development. You'll see across the board, at grades K to four, right now, we are over the projection by 47 students. On grades five, 16 over the projection, grade six, 22 over projection. You can read the rest of the data. Oddly, grade 11, we were right on target, we're right where we had projected that to be. Overall, district-wide, we are 160 students above projection. Now, that doesn't really mean anything right now, because the data is fluid. We historically have seen, in the first week or two of school, our enrollments will drop, because people wait, as they've moved, they haven't withdrawn their children yet, they haven't notified us yet. So chances are, we're going to see some of these numbers go down, but this is where we are as of yesterday. So let's go into the, we're going to drill down into the enrollments, the enrollment detail, K four in each of the schools. So first is kindergarten. So let me just go over the layout of this, of this chart, because we'll see this chart for each of the other grades and special ed programs. So this is for kindergarten, shows us what our enrollment date is, this is looking at the first day of school, the data is as of yesterday. You see the row that says enrollment, that's telling us the numbers in kindergarten, across the board in each of the elementary schools. The second row below that, classrooms, how many sections in, of kindergarten in each of those schools? And then the next row, third under, that shows average per class, is what's the average enrollment in each of those, in each of those classroom sections in each of the schools? That last row, FES Room Capacity Range, what we've done is, we've looked at the rooms at which, or in which each of these programs are placed, and based off of the FES standards, identified what's that range? What is the capacity based off of the FES standard? So if we look in the first column of data for Bound Monroe, 33 students enrolled for two classrooms, we have two class sections, the average class size is 17, but the room capacity in the kindergarten classrooms at Bound Monroe ranges from 21 to 24, that they can hold from 21 to 24 students, based on the FES standard. Does that make sense? Okay. So as we look at the data for kindergarten, all of our class sizes are within the policy maximum, the policy maximum for kindergarten is 22 students. So we're all within the maximums here. Okay, let's go on to first grade. First grade, we've got a couple of hiccups going on here, but again, remember, the data is still fluid, and we'll be watching this as we move forward. At Bound Monroe, in grade one, the average class is at 20 students, the FES room capacity's at 17. So starting to get a little bit tighter at Bound Monroe, but again, the data's still early, and we'll be watching this as we go forward. Frost, same issue, we are on the tighter side at Frost per section, because the FES room capacity is at 18. And you'll see, not quite as much, but still a little bit over at Memorial and at Warrens Dorfer in the far right of the chart. Let's move on to grade two. Grade two, Bound Monroe. Grade two is very small class sizes at Bound Monroe, 11, below what they should be, below what the state expects those class sizes to be at a minimum from an efficiency standard, at a minimum looking at 16. So there's nothing that we can do with Bound, because Bound has two sections per grade, period. That doesn't change, ever. So, and the room capacity for a grade two is at 17. Otherwise, the remaining schools are all within the policy max, policy maximums are 25, and yet, even looking strictly at the FES room capacity ranges, we're fine in terms of those ranges. Let's go to grade three. At grade three, Bound Monroe, this is an area where the average class size is a little bit higher than the FES room capacity range. We have the same situation at Frost, slightly higher than the room capacity, but otherwise, the remaining schools are all within the ranges as they're indicated, and certainly well below the policy maximums. Grade four. All of the schools are within the policy maximums, except for Frost, we're just maybe one or two students above in the, in the various sections. Let's go into special needs programs now, across the board. This is for the autism program in the elementary schools. The autism program is at Central Chitt, Central Frost, Lawrence Brook, and Warrens Dorfer. We're nearly full, as of right now. You see what the average classes are, that's reflective of the code. Well, that's reflective of the computed class size, and the legal room capacity is what's permitted by code. So we're not permitted to go above those numbers off of the administrative code. So we've got room for an additional student, I'm not sure of some of the details of how many students might be waiting in the wings, there are always students who are moving in, and we have IEPs that are in process, but this is the status as of yesterday. Next program is ERI. ERI is Emotional Regulation Impairment. We have some room in this program, this is housed at Frost, so we do have some room to be able to provide for additional capacity for students. And then our next program is LLD, Learning and/or Language Disabled. We have this program at Memorial and at Warrens Dorfer, and we do have some room still for additional capacity or for additional students should the need arise. The next program is MD, Multi-ided Disabled. This program is at Chittick, and we do also have room in this program. And then the next section is our preschool disabled and integrated pre-K programs. We have this at several of our facilities. This analysis is a little bit more complex than just how many total students and how many sections, because we have full-time students and we have part-time students, so we have to calculate for what does that come out to on a half-day basis? At any rate, we are within our ranges for, for this program, and we have room in the end, should, should the need arise for additional students coming in. And then next, while it's not a K-12 regular instructional program, ELA plays an important part in East Brunswick for the support that we provide for our parents. ELA is housed in our elementary schools, so they take up, it takes up space, but I think it's important for the board and the community to understand what those numbers are as well. And so we see across the board what our ELA enrollments are. We have 203 students enrolled for ELA this coming school year, that's for the start of school. We don't have the room for additional sections at this point, we have, as of yesterday, I believe, 30, 30 students on the waiting list, should other opportunities open up. But these are our ELA capacities, and we are fine in terms of our ranges, just a tad of room available, but not, not much. So let's get into seats. How many seats? So this chart takes a lot of data, summarizes a lot of data, and I'll show you some, I'll show you an example in just a few moments, but takes a lot of data that we've analyzed for every one of the rooms throughout every one of our schools, and looks at, what is the use of that room? Is it a kindergarten? Is it a first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade? Is it a special needs program? And so forth. And applies, based off of that square footage, what is the allowance off of the standards for the students in that particular program? And so the end result is what we're showing in that first column of data, what our total seats are based on the facility's efficiency standards, the special education legal requirements, and board policy maximums where that might apply. So these are our total seats. We're looking at the next column, our total enrollment, which was the snapshot from yesterday for the first day of school, and also showing what our Early Learning Academy enrollment is in each of the schools, because that is, as I said, taking up a classroom or two in each of the buildings. And you'll see in the last column, then, what our over and under is. Now, as we look at the over/under, the maximum seats, we have some room, and we have some facilities where it looks like we're capped out. So I think that's, that's an important thing for us to be watching. I think one of the things that this also brings to mind is that we really need to study the school boundaries. We're going to need, because this is not something new, but we're going to need to really take a close look at resetting those boundaries in order to improve the distribution of students among the schools. So that's something that, you know, we'll need to have additional conversations about as we go forward, it's not something for us to delve into this evening, but I want to put that out there so that, that seed has been planted. I've highlighted Frost on this chart, because that's where we're going to drill into some of the details, so you can see the, all the information related to Frost, and that'll help, I hope, to give you a better understanding of all the other information that, that the board's been provided. So let's move into the next slide, or two. So this first slide shows all the room numbers, what's the type of room, and obviously their classrooms, this is part of a larger report that looks at everything in the building, from hallway space to bathrooms, to closets, storage, offices, and so forth. So it analyzes every single square footage within the facility, so, and each of those types would be reflected in that greater report. So here, we're looking at classrooms, and then the third column shows us, what's the square footage of those rooms? The assignment is what's the program in that classroom? And then, based on the assignment, the next column is, what's the FES square footage per student? The next two columns are calculated. So first, seats based on square footage is very simply, the square footage divided by the square foot per student. The last column to the right, where the calculation exceeds the standard in terms of policy, or exceeds the administrative code, then we're going to show that lesser number in that last column. In this analysis, we don't have any of those exceptions, but we will in the next slide. So, on this next slide, the data that's been highlighted in yellow, those are self-contained classrooms, and so while you have on one classroom, room 1207, 710 square feet, the allowance for that program is 50 square feet per student. So the maximum is going to be 12 students. As we go down to the next highlighted room, room 1211, that classroom is 1108 square feet, at 79 square feet per student, the maximum, however, is 12 students. So if you do the division, you're not going to get the result that's showing there, because we have to have the legal compliance. And then right below that, if you go to room 1212, you'll see where, that's one example of the total number of seats based on the square footage, is 26 seats for kindergarten, but the policy maximum is 22. So throughout our analysis, what we, when we were looking at, what is the total number of seats in each of the schools, we're looking at the data in that last column, because that's the data that matters. It's based off of the FES, the Facility's Efficiency Standard, it's based off of what the legal requirements are for special education, and it's based on the board's policy regarding what is the maximum that is allowable for each of the different grade levels. That wasn't so bad, was it?
Not so bad.
Now, let me, let me say this, this is, this is more or less a teaser for the board, because obviously, the board received information yesterday, last night, actually, this was a primer, we're going to be doing an update on the enrollment at the next board meeting, and certainly, you'll have an opportunity to have reviewed the information in more depth, and then we can entertain more questions than what might come up now.
Mr. Winston will start.
Yeah, thank you very much for this, this is the first time in the four.
This is the first time in the four years or five years I've been on this board that I've seen something put together this succinct. So with that in mind, I'm almost getting the feeling you're making a case for something. This is not a capacity issue, we have a logistics issue. So it's where the students are, not necessarily. You're showing 572 open seats universally, 206 at Memorial, 136 at Central, and then overcapacity in Frost. Is this the beginning of a conversation that is coming down regarding a redistricting to level the playing field where students are?
Yes.
Okay, that then, I wish you said that upfront.
Well, that's an offshoot from, from the analysis, because there's been a lot of concern regarding capacity, at least I think there has been.
Right.
And I think it was important for us to look at, at what is the capacity to be able to house additional students within the district? You know, enrollments, they increase and they decrease. I've seen that happen for decades. So it's, it's very fluid. What is the, whatever the number of students that we can house? Now, while that, and let me say this, while that chart indicates a certain number of students or seats that is available, 572 seats net available, they may not be in the right places.
Well, that's my point.
So, so, you know, 572, that's great, but if, if you end up with, with 10 students enrolling that are third graders, but you have no more room in a third grade, but you have 20 seats available in other programs, that's not going to help.
Right. Then, okay, then with that in mind, we moved the fifth graders out of the elementary school. Were we that far overcapacity when the fifth graders were in the elementary schools?
We had, we had no room.
Yeah.
We had no room.
With the special education programming in those, in those schools, we, we were literally out of room. But Mr. Winston, to your point about redistricting, and this is not, it's not, not a fault of the district, this was a practice that's been established for decades among many school districts, that when a new development occurs within that school district, that there's an assignment of that community, which school they will go to. And so that occurs from time to time. Growth occurred over East Brunswick's history. It plateaued, and, and then now what we're seeing is this opportunity to re, to create more efficiency in the logistics of where our children go. And, and, but we have to align that with our transportation. So that, that becomes a factor. It's not just about which school has the capacity, it's about how do we transport those children there? And if those children may have been walkers or are going to be walkers, what sidewalks exist, what logistics? So this is a much more complex exercise than just saying, we need room here, we have room here, we're going to put them over there. So I just want to make sure that the public knew that was going to be a larger project.
But ultimately, that is the answer.
Yeah, that's, that's the answer.
Ultimately, you will, you know, simply you're going to be moving.
Right.
Moving students around, and this 572 number with proper logistics really puts the bed any argument that redevelopment in this town will affect elementary school capacity. I think I could come to that conclusion based on the 572, measuring against the demographic studies that we've received that highlights 450 students. And while another board member and myself maybe put that number slightly higher, we're still within the threshold, two other board members, we're still within the threshold of 572. So redevelopment, in fact, one can conclude, will not impact our numbers. The problem clearly is redistricting and a logistics issue in moving students. Agree?
That's what it appears to be right now.
Thank you.
Mr. Sizmore.
And if I, if I may, that presumes that all of the students that may come in are all elementary.
Right.
And will fit in the right buckets.
Yeah, we make the buckets. I mean, yeah, it's, okay.
We have, we have seen some anomalies. We have some of the newest apartments that are opened on Summer Hill Road. The grades were elementary to high school, right, that we registered, Karen? Right. So the distribution isn't neatly aligned with the demographer's study may say.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Sizmore.
How many seventh graders about do we have?
Seventh?
Yes, approximate, doesn't have to be.
What the enrollment was, so seventh graders, 669 as of yesterday.
Okay, and then ninth is in the trailers? Where are they at? What number are they at?
677.
Okay, so just a couple.
The seventh graders are in the TCS.
Yeah, trailers. Seventh graders, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's the number, okay, so I'm sorry, that's the number one, yeah. So as we look at it right now, we have to look at our 11 buildings, but, and what Mr. Winston said, we moved the fifth grade out. The elementary schools were at capacity. They're in trailers right now. They have to go somewhere. So something has to be built. That's going to be another discussion, I understand that. But the other point I wanted to make is, historically, and parents have pushed back on this, we don't push it to the max. Although district policy says we can have 22 or 23 or 24, anybody in the day, correct me if I'm wrong, we as East Brunswick, we don't want to push all of our classrooms to the max. So I'm not saying throw out those 572 seats, but a good portion of them, and I love your numbers, thank you for putting it in context here, but, I mean, if we probably removed what East Brunswick does historically for the quality of the education here, yeah, we have, we have some things to focus on, on room, and that's my comment, but I, but I love your numbers.
And, and to, to the point with regard to the max, again, one of the things that we looked at was not every classroom going to the maximum, because it's not physically possible. Or if it's physically possible, it's not right.
Right.
Right? It's just not right. So if we're going to provide education to our kids on an equitable basis, we have to do that, I believe, also on the facility end, and make sure that every child is having at least an equal amount of space within which to learn.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mrs. Becker.
Thanks, Laura. Great report, Bern. I think you used a word at the very beginning of your presentation that's really important. The word was fluid. So numbers, in this case, they're important. We need to do trend analysis. We need to do long-term planning, short-term planning, all kinds of planning, and, and in this case, capacity enrollment, we absolutely have to rely on numbers. But I interpreted your use of the word fluid was, this is a snapshot in time. This is what you said, you made very clear, enrollment was as of yesterday, and you talked about, you gave an example of people who are moving, who haven't formally withdrawn their children yet, so their children's names are still on our rosters and still being counted. But it, it goes the other way also. Sure, ideally, a lot of families with children, if they're going to be moving into a town, whatever town, like to be in place by the time school starts, but doesn't always work like that. I remember when we bought our house, we closed in March or April. So we will have children moving in as just part of the natural ebb and flow of a town all throughout the year.
Yes.
We will have children being classified throughout the year. So right now, we have that wonderful data about the square footage and the enrollment needs for the special ed classrooms, which a lot are dictated by law, right, Matt, not necessarily district policy.
Law.
But law. But we don't know who, as school starts, what child will be identified, how many children will be identified by any individual teacher. I'd like them assessed. I'm, I'm seeing something, because that's what we do, we're proactive. We don't wait for a problem to blossom. We try an RTI or, or all of our other support methodologies. So we're going to have kids classified throughout the year, which is going to throw off all those numbers also. So I, there's no, I'm not coming to some huge conclusion here. It's just that word, fluid, really resonated with me, and I think we have to keep that in mind every time we look at something like this.
And, and I'm glad you said that, because.
Want me to say it again?
No, that's, that's okay. I think we got it. But, but the fluidity isn't just the snapshot and the, and the enrollment changing. The fluidity is also how is the facility being used? How many sections of a particular grade is, you know, exist? You know, are there more or are there less of a kindergarten versus a fourth grade? Or are there additional special needs self-contained programs that are taking classrooms that won't by law hold as many students? So when we talk about the number of seats, the total number of seats available is fluid. It depends on what are the programs, the class sections that exist within the facility for that school year, and it's going to change from year to year.
Mr. Carangial.
Thank you for your presentation and your staff also. You know, people will help out with this, so thank you to others. I might contribute. To Mr. Sizmore's point, I'll give you all an analogy, okay? I've said this before, sitting up here. I like to eat, and when I get too full, what happens? When my stomach's at capacity, what happens? I get a stomach ache. So to your point, Mr. Sizmore, I don't want a stomach ache. Does that make sense to everyone?
No.
No.
Are you kidding me? When I'm at a capacity, when I'm at a capacity, like our classrooms, we have problems, just like my stomach, hello? Jesus.
Story, Mark.
He got it, he was just busting.
Well, I've said this a bunch of times, and it's, it did make sense. We don't want to be at capacity at all costs, if we need to be, we have to be, but to serve our, you know, our legacy.
I won't even, I didn't even get into utilization rates, because that would just blow everybody's minds, so.
You know, we are growing as a township, which is great, but, you know, Mr. Sizmore's point.
Thank you. Thank you for the chuckle. Ms. Gauz.
All right, possibly along the same lines as Mr. Carangial's full stomach. I know that we're working for the room capacity for the size, and that some of the buildings have larger rooms, and therefore we legally can put more students in. But I agree with what you're saying in the way of, you know, we may need to move some lines and move some students around, because even if one room is large, there's only one teacher. It's not like we're increasing the number of teachers as we increase the number of children. And I believe that the student-to-teacher ratio has a huge impact on the education the children receive. And, and my daughter's going to go into first grade at Memorial in a week, and she'll be in a class of 23, according to this, or something close, in a room with a maximum capacity of 21. And the, the school is fantastic, and I'm really happy that we're there, and please don't move the line to take us out there. But, but I'm also aware, from an educational standpoint, that what you always say about equity in the elementary schools, even if the room sizes are different, equity and student-to-teacher ratio, I think, has a bigger impact than floor space ratios, right? There's just more teacher attention, there's more potential there. So that was my thought there. My other question was, in places where we're maxed and locked in by law, like the autism program at Frost, like we're at six, and we can have six. And East Brunswick is known for having excellent special education programs. I mean, I've had people tell me they've moved here not just for the education, but for those programs. What do we do when we get one more child? Are they bused to another building? Are there waivers? What's our next option for this year?
It could be any one of those. We'll have discussions about that in terms of, can we open another section? And one of the things that we have to be cognizant of is that when we open an additional section, where we have the ability to do so, that room then becomes unavailable for, you know, other program as well. So we have to look at all of those things and have serious discussions about what's the best thing for the student and for the district, because we've got to balance all of it.
Right.
To your point with regard to the student-teacher ratio, that's one of the things that we have been discussing. And as we've done in the past, where those numbers have pushed the outer limit, we may need to add an instructional assistant in those classes to be able to provide better equity, if you will. So those are all things that are, you know, in the hopper and being discussed.
You know, sometimes I've balked at your really strong focus on equity in each of the elementary schools.
I never noticed that.
But in this, I so agree with you, because the student-teacher ratio is so, so important. But thank you for your answers. This is actually very, very clear, and I don't like numbers.
One more, Mr. Hung. He thought he was escaping. Look at you.
I'm not going to talk about science.
Okay, but I do hope you have AI to help you analyze those data, a lot of data processing.
I have two eyes to help me analyze.
AI, not two eyes. Okay. So I realized that district-wise, grade one to four, we have 113 classrooms, but district-wise, we have 31 special ed classrooms. I just want to know the percentage of students with IEPs among our entire student population.
It's about 19%.
19.19%.
Okay, does this 113 classroom include this 31 classroom for IEP or for special needs students? I guess no.
Those classrooms, the regular ed classrooms.
Yeah, I, I added.
The non-self-contained classrooms will include students who have IEPs but don't have a requirement for a self-contained room. So yes.
Okay, so I just added the number, I said, okay, the I, special needs classroom consists a lot, very big numbers, percentages of our entire classroom. So, thank you.
Part of what Mr. Giuliani's exercise, and so he's created this document that can be updated at will to provide real-time information to the board for making decisions and trending and pointing to where we are at a point in time. The other dynamics that occur outside of that report, and I'm watching Mrs. Tibbetts, you know, as we're talking about, just adding instructional aid to the classroom, now becomes a staffing issue. Where are those people? How do we acquire that human resource, even down to a teacher? This is the tricky part about this time of year, because we're making assumptions based on information we collected all summer long, and even to the conclusion of last school year, rolling all of our students up. And then for a district like ours, it's starting to become a dynamic, people are moving into. You know, you, you look at, okay, can we open a section? If we open a section, can we find a teacher to teach it? And then we've opened the school year, do you break that section up? And, and so these are the real conversations we're having literally every two days. We're looking at the data, looking at trending, talking to the principals, especially the elementary principals right now, and keeping track of selected hotspots that we see based on this information. But as Mr. Giuliani alluded to, we're going to probably, we anticipate from historical information, we'll start to see some withdrawals, maybe about the first week of school. People that weren't here, like you said, that simply complete withdrawal process and they'll come off the rolls. So I think this September information will be a much more valid look at where we are as a district at that point in time. But I do appreciate the work you put into this, because I know this was, this was laborious. You went out, when you talk about staff, he didn't have staff, he went out to every building and analyzed every single classroom, every building.
I would track mistakes.
Yeah.
You're probably an accurate roller, I know, Mr. Giuliani.
But what you created is something that will have a tremendous impact on the district and the ability of the board to make decisions. So thanks.
Thank you, Bernie. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Vicki. The moment you've all been waiting for, they see some of our wonderful ad hoc people in the audience this evening. Mrs. Becker, would you like to talk to us about the Ad-Hoc Committee?
Yes, I would.
I would love that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am not going to have a PowerPoint, so I am very comfortable delivering my committee report right from here. There will be a. There will be a second part to the presentation, which Dr. Valeski will take over. And I think there might be a PowerPoint.
We might have a couple of slides.
I thought you were going to say a quiz.
Okay. There'll be a quiz and a PowerPoint. And then after I've done my committee report and Dr. Valeski has done his part of the presentation, then we're going to open it up to the board for Q and A. So. An ad hoc committee of the board is a committee formed at the discretion and purview of the board president to address a specific issue for a specific amount of time. And so the ad hoc committee to assess the feasibility of a new high school was created. And I know the administration went to great pains to make sure that there was representatives from all different segments of the district on this committee. Empty nesters, senior citizens, parents of young children, parents of older children, singles, people representing different cultures in town, people representing different interests, different groups, different extracurriculars, the municipality, the government of the town. All different segments. I'm probably leaving several out. And we brought all these people together and I'm going to tell you what happened over our four meetings. First of all, I believe that there are several people in the audience who gave of their time and energy to this committee. And I would just like you to stand up so we can recognize you. Rob? Jack? That's it? And yes, and Ms. Zambicki? Thank you so much. These people are wonderful representatives of the representatives who were on this committee. And again, we greatly appreciate all the time you gave. We also want to thank Dr. Zambicki and the EBEA Pride Grant for all the refreshments they provided. And we want to thank Karen Mandler and Janet Andeline for all the logistics and communication, all the scheduled coordination, making sure that everything was set up the way we wanted it to. Thank you so much. So that's something important just to note. You're going to hear me refer to things like tabletop exercise or breakout session. We made a very deliberate decision not to have what I'm going to call audience or stadium seating, which is actually traditional seating in rows the way our boardroom is set up or a movie theater is set up. We decided to create workstations, if you will, and have. It varied from four to six people at a table at a workstation so that we would be able to, after a discussion, break out into small groups for a more detailed discussion and also to do some exercises. So with that being said, our first meeting, which was last January, Dr. Valeski started out the meeting by telling us that he and other central office staff and administrators had been involved in discussions with our architects and had come up with some preliminary, what he called investigations and assumptions for design that had already been established. And these included the board's decision to explore the 9 to 12 grade structure, the building site location, soil conditions, building placement, parking, water retention, underground utilities, security considerations, air quality, fire safety, sustainability, and maintaining the existing athletic playing fields that we have invested in. There was also discussion about multi-use or community use features of this structure. We had a discussion about pilot funding, pilot as payment in lieu of taxes to offset the addition of dedicated community use features. But we did not have access to the actual number or level of pilot funding that may have been earmarked for the project, but it was discussed. We also discussed potential revenue sources, a new additional performing arts center rental and an athletic field rental for tournaments. An athletic center that could become a destination for teams in the state or out of state to come and use our athletic center for the tournaments that we all spend our entire weekends going to, all over the place. We then had, we asked the groups to break out and to explore desirable features in a new high school design. And this included community use spaces. And we had a discussion about integrating community activities on an active school campus. We talked about a campus approach as opposed to a single structure. We talked about a single structure, one story, two story, three story, four stories. We also talked about costs associated with adding the community use features, security, maintenance, and organizational control. And that was our first meeting. And everyone left happy and optimistic. And there was a great energy in the room. Our second meeting the next month started out with a view from our current high school principal, Dr. Benala. And he shared input he had from the staff and also the students, existing building constraints. And he talked about the different visions for, what is curriculum going to look like? Not just this year or next year, but over the next 25, 30 years. And what our vision and mission should include. We spent the majority of the rest of that meeting talking about the marketing aspect of the need for a structure and how this would be communicated to the residents. And the variety of formats for communication was also discussed as this was very important to everyone. The third meeting. The district's architecture took input from the first two meetings and began to block out general stasis associated with the new design. So we actually were presented with poster boards and projections on a whiteboard or a PowerPoint screen of what we had talked about, kind of layered, so that we could see, begin to visualize the various components we were talking about. This gave the committee a general scope of the proposed building footprint. A major takeaway from this was lessons learned from previous construction projects. For instance, we made certain decisions when we built the new Hammershold Upper Elementary School and when we renovated Churchill Junior High School based on existing structures. And that led to some unfavorable consequences. And again, I know it's a cliche, but it's not about making the mistake. It's about what you learn from it and the steps you take not to repeat it. So we talked about that. We talked about traffic flow, parking security, administrative oversight. And then we, again, there was a lot of discussion that meeting about the curricular direction of East Brunswick High School. We talked about the need for science labs alongside workspaces, mechanical labs, woodworking, esports. We talked about student commerce. There was an idea about having like a mini type of shop right within the building, staffed by students, run by students. The administration would be by students to give students an opportunity to take what they were learning in sales, marketing, finance classes and actually put them to use in the building. The fourth and final meeting was in June. And the cost, time, and final product resulting from renovating the existing high school versus building an entirely new high school was presented and contrasted for the committee. The committee recommended that a new high school continue to be explored along with associated financing grants and scheduled for a future referendum vote in our community. The committee also emphasized, again, the crucial aspect, the importance of appropriate marketing, public relations, to be utilized to support a successful campaign. And that was our final meeting. Again, I. Everybody respectfully agreed to disagree. We, there were different visions presented. But the feeling of energy and optimism tied with the energy and optimism happening in so many parts of our town was carried through by the committee. I love the fact that we spent so much time talking about curriculum because we're planning for classes that haven't even been invented yet. We're planning to train students for jobs and careers that haven't even been invented yet. So our mission can be a bit overwhelming unless you have an opportunity to break it down as we did in this committee. So overall, I think it was a really positive experience. And now I'd like to throw it over to Dr. Valeski.
Thank you, Mrs. Becker. Karen, could you put the high school board up first, please? So for anyone who was not in that ad hoc committee, this is the schematic result of the input from the committee. If you look over to the right, the more the coral or the, that color, I guess that's coral, to the right, or a little bit light rust, that is the new, proposed new high school site, the footprint of the high school. And to the right of that is Summer Hill Road. And then behind that, you see where the existing high school would have been. You now see parking and athletic fields filling in that space. And then looking at our athletic fields as they currently exist to the left and down. So the committee gave input. The architect kept revising designs, coming up with his footprint. What you can't tell from this is the building, the actual school building, is at least three stories tall. So instead of being a singular story like we currently have in the larger campus at our high school, with the exception of B Hall at the high school, this is at least a three-story complex. Some design features, as Mrs. Becker said, you know, we're talking about footprint, we're talking about efficiency. We're talking about using regenerative power to use with the building. We also are aware that land to the, I guess that would be the north of the high school. Is that the right orientation, Bernie? Where the orchards are? Is that north of the building?
West.
Or is it west?
Yeah, whatever, northwest.
So that is going to be unusable for us in the future. We also know that parking becomes a premium, especially if we're looking at adding another performing arts center to our campus. We do know that the JM PAC at Hammershold Upper Elementary School is fully committed in rentals, a new performing arts center. We would have people wanting to rent that. We have people in reserve right now. We would have to do a further analysis, see what our forecast would be for that. But we also talked, as Mrs. Becker said, about playing fields and about hosting for tournaments. And one of the things that came up in the discussion was when we could bring people to the community for, say, an athletic tournament, then you bring people to East Brunswick who want to stay overnight. They want to use hotels. They want to eat at restaurants. They want to shop locally. So there is some kind of symbiotic relationship with the township. Also, if you look at this building and if you're looking at the new footprint of the high school, on the left-hand side would be the location of the administrative section of the building, looking out back over all of the athletic fields. So the building was actually composed on this brand-new footprint to be, use the best orientation, the best organizational orientation for safety and security, flow around the campus. But all of that comes at a cost. So the price tag for what the architects project for this facility is $430 to $470 million. That is a big number, and we acknowledge that. So Karen, can you put up the second? So we talked earlier about where the ninth graders are going to go. And we talked about, we've had conversations among the board. We've had conversations in the community. And Dr. Benala and I were talking this morning. We actually talked to students probably back in about 2016, graduating seniors, getting their feedback about the one thing they would change about their experience. And overall, the students said, I wish I had ninth grade at the high school. I wish I hadn't been separated for that ninth grade year. That's been our focus for all these years. So looking at our existing high school footprint, could a ninth grade section be added to that footprint? And the answer is yes. But these are qualitative and quantitative decisions. The architects estimate, based on information they had when we had the ad hoc committee, about $270 million to renovate and add to this building. Since then, we have been looking at the high school this summer. With construction, we've been using, putting HVAC systems in the high school. The truss structure of the high school is primarily wooden. And it's not something that if we were going to renovate the building, we'd want to retain. We'd want to replace that whole system above the building. So that's not factored in that $270 million cost tag or price tag they've given us so far. So the other thing that I want to share is, on the qualitative side, the time to construct a brand-new building would be about 30 months. Students would remain in the existing high school. We could build a new high school and then occupy it and then demolish the existing high school. But the 30 months would be just to construct the school. That doesn't include demolition or renovation to fields and things of that nature. To renovate the existing building would be approximately six years, start to finish. First, you would have to build swing space to be able to bring the ninth grade up to the high school and to be able to move one part of the building into the new section. And then we'd have to section off the building in intelligent segments and basically close that part of the building down for a year and then demolish, rebuild, demolish, rebuild, and do that over and over again. That would be more of a disruption to students, but you are looking at a lower cost factor, too. So with the ad hoc committee's recommendation, I would recommend to the board that, and we talked about this in committee, that we begin to think about going out to the public and hosting community forums and soliciting input from people with this information that we have now from the ad hoc committee. And I thank them very much because we wouldn't have gotten to the product of what the high school would look like without their input. But going out to the community and giving them more information about what the quantitative and qualitative factors would be and get their input and bring their input back to the board to refine this approach. And that's.
Thank you. And Vicki, that was a wonderful summary. For the ad hoc committee members, I realize for everyone's scheduling, not every member was able to be at each meeting. So I think that was a really nice summary. And although we did do something different this year, usually a committee is designed to be three to four board members because we cannot have more than four board members or a constitutional quorum. One of the nice things that we were able to do was to rotate in all of our board members. So all of the board members that wished to be part of the ad hoc committee were able to be there for at least one meeting. But that being said, that means there were some meetings they missed. So I think that was a terrific. Thank you, summary. But because some of the board members were not at each meeting, if there are any other questions. But because some of the board members were not at each meeting, if there are any other questions that you have specifically for Dr. Valesky? Yes, oh.
I actually wanted to ask Dr. Valesky.
Good question. The, the commute, so you're proposing that we have a, a community forum?
Mm-hmm, a community forum.
To basically go over what we've been talking about tonight. But anybody could come.
Right.
It would be like what we did with the, the post-it notes years ago, right?
Yeah, strategic planning.
Right, that's right.
So one of the things that we had talked about, and, and in the ad hoc committee, we spent a good part of one night discussing communicating with different subgroups in our community and getting out to people who would not have necessarily known about this or seen this, our senior community. But there were many other people. People have been hearing about it. I've had people approach me and ask me when the new high school is going to be done. So people don't fully understand that there's a referendum that must be held first and the community has to weigh in on that. I've had people just assume that this board's made a decision to build a new high school.
But the part of the thrust of the community night will be presenting this option?
Yeah, kind of like where, you know, these are the options that we're down to.
Renovation plus a ninth-grade building versus a four-year, a new four-year structure.
Right.
And you're going to.
And we're going to, we would refine these numbers to the highest degree possible.
Take.
And then have people tour the existing high school. Have, have this event at the high school, have them see, have them touch and feel what's going on at the high school. Go into the auditorium, what does that feel like? What does our cafeteria look like? And then we did post-it notes at Hammerhill. We put up, everybody went up.
I was going to say, how are we going to gauge their feedback?
We will do QR codes. We can set up stations, people can use their phones, they can walk up, they can scan the QR code, they can type in a comment. And we could automatically collect the information. Within days, we would be able to assimilate that information and be able to give real, real information back to the board and to the ad hoc committee about what a greater part of the community thought about what these two options look like. Because both are going to involve a referendum and one is more costly than the other. It's, it becomes a community decision. And, you know, what's the value that you want to place on this? But the ad hoc committee clearly was aligned with the new high school concept and promoting that. But also looking at the options of, you know, what is the renovation going to cost? And we understand that these are real numbers, these are real impacts to people. And, you know, it's, it's got to be a decision of, of the community.
It's a great idea. Karen's going to miss the big binder, though. Mr. Carrangelo, Mr. Hong.
Thank you. Always awesome. I love sitting next to you. Anyway, so is there any chance that we could utilize some of the old high schools, such as some steel or? Because that's like $600. There's no way, because we have to keep it open until, there's no way to use any of that.
Are you, Mr. Carrangelo, are you talking about for a new construction?
Right.
No.
Can we just like?
No.
That could save.
Yeah.
Substantial, okay. My takeaways are this is getting the ninth graders up, super important, in my opinion, everyone. Also, more high-tech opportunities for all the kids, makes perfect sense, right? Great. It'll save money on energy. Eventually, we will save money, eventually. We will be starting to save money. So that's a thing. Another thing is a revenue generator. People, we will host events where we have to go somewhere now, right? We will host track and we'll host things. So to me, this makes a whole lot of sense. And there's, I have a longer list, but, you know, just to start, this is super important. And in my opinion, I went out of high school, graduated like 1932, it seems. But, you know, it was kind of outdated when I went, and I'm an old man as it is. So I think it's very well needed, sorry.
An old man with stomach problems.
No, a full stomach.
One, this would also allow us to collect information on what we think the, the operational cost of the facilities would be over the same period of time. Let's say we renovated the, the high school, built a new high school. Could we look at the comparison of the operational cost? The other thing that was clear, though, from the ad hoc committee was flow within the building, the width of the hallways. When people go into our Hammerhill Upper Elementary School, they're amazed at how wide the hallways are and how well traffic moves. High school, not so much. And, and you've been there, Mr. Winston's been there, we've had other board members there with, with students in the building. And that was one of the primary factors when we started collecting information. And we did, we collected after this first night, all of this information and put it on a document. So STEM, esports studio, flexibility for classrooms, the width of the hallways. Then we got into athletics and indoor spaces, more athletic facilities, larger fitness weight room, revised concession stand, of course, press box. But the arts were interesting because we have a growing arts program, as I reported tonight, with the band. So all of these things are legitimate in the arts program. Proper long-term storage, movable walls for versatility, state-of-the-art performing arts center, updated sound and lighting system, orchestra pit, more technology, black box, dressing rooms, ticket booth, practice space for music, and a concession stand for the arts. And then finally, just other considerations were about the environment, climate control, ample parking, and, and adaptability to technology.
But it also brings the opportunity to have more people want to live here with a brand-new, awesome high school, right? I mean, that's one of our downfall, the only downfall we have is we don't have anything updated. So with a new high school, it would permit the opportunity to have more people that we could promote to live here. We have development coming, so say, hey, guys, you want to move here, you want to, you know, raise a family, want to have kids eventually? Bring them here, eventually they'll go through this brand-new, beautiful high school. So I thought that this was a great opportunity for us to grow as a township as well.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Carrangelo. Mr. Hong, you got a question?
Yeah, yes. So everyone knows I support a new high school, yeah? But the number shocked me. You know, if we have a brand-new one, $430 to $475,000 millions, that's a big number. Even with the addition and plus renovation is $270 million. Yes, I'm shocked, very shocked. So Victor, you mentioned that for the option number two. So the cost, $270 million does not include the cost for the renovation. So how quick can you get the proxy number for the innovation? So we can have proxy total cost for the addition and renovation for the option number two? How quick can you get that number?
I'll, we'll talk to the architects, but I don't want to speak for them. So we will, we'll make the request, but I can't tell you how quickly they can get that information for us. But that, before we went to the public forum, we would want to have that information.
Yes.
One of the things, so I, I do want to share with the board and with the public, one of the things that we do not know, and we would not know at any public forum, is what state, in the form of any grants or any other state funding for schools would be available to us. Right, Mr. Juliana? That, that, we may be entitled to money at some point in the future, but we may not. There may not be any available money. So there, those are factors that are very fluid, too. So we will have to make intelligent estimations and forecasts based on things we might assume, but might not be, might not be accurate.
So there would be.
Do you have an idea?
We would have to look and see what availability of the board would be because I would love for the board to participate. Availability of space because we want to host it at the high school. I would love to have student representatives give tours of the building. So we, we'll have to look and block out sometimes, but we, we could do it as early as later in September. Maybe, I think we were looking at the 27th of September.
So let me finish. So, so it will be wise for us to get all the numbers together.
Correct.
Including the future new high school operating cost, which hopefully be less than the current cost. Let's give all the number as accurate as possible, as much as possible, before we got the community event that people know. Because that's will be huge community decision. The number is too much.
Right, because you can't keep changing the numbers and telling the people it's a moving target.
Yes.
Right.
But try your best before we got the.
Right.
Community event, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hong. Mr. Winston?
Thank you. I have, I have several things to say on this. So the current, the current structure we have, I'll just start here. The current structure we have includes a piece of the building that was built in 2001, which the best of my research shows about a $21 million spend by the district. When I do what I do for a living, that's about $60 million in today's dollars from then. So we're talking about tearing down a 20-year-old, oh, yeah. Hey, we're talking about tearing down a 20-year-old building that could easily be saved. I have Carl older than that. So, but, but we'll set that aside. In 2011, Monroe built a high school for $100 million for 2,508 students, nine through 12. I can't, I'm having a really difficult time, to Mr. Hong's point, of getting to a 4X number in 12 years, which makes me question what the architect has come back with or what's on our wish list. So I, I, I think it's really easy to talk about spending $471 million of taxpayers' dollars when I, I really think we have to stop, pump the brakes here. We have a $271 million proposal plus the cost of the trusses that you've mentioned. And even then, I have trouble getting to a 3.5X over $100 million spend that Monroe did back in 2011. I, I appreciate it. I almost want to say, we need another architect. There is something severely wrong with these numbers. They don't make financial sense, and this is what I do for a living. It doesn't make sense. A 4.5X build on an 11-year difference between Monroe. Something's severely wrong with what's being presented here. I, I, I take exception to all of it. I think it's flawed data. Something's very, very wrong. It doesn't make fiscal, it's, it's fiscally irresponsible to pursue this with these numbers without exploring at least four or five different options. My opinion, my opinion only.
Sure, no title, too, absolutely. Did you have another question?
Well, we're talking about the 27th, that's the candidate's night.
Oh, okay. All right, well.
That's not going to work.
Mr. Cummings?
Did, did we have other architects weigh in on this previously or not?
You have, you have a district architect.
I see, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think it's a valid point for, obviously, a project of this size to explore something of that nature. I mean, I think at the end of the day, there's going to be a lot of questions that are coming to this community event. I think the most important that people are going to want to have answered is, what's it going to cost me? And so we have to do everything that we can to get that figured out. And, you know, if that's to the best of our ability.
To, to Mr. Winston's question and comment, our architects did benchmark the cost against construction that is occurring right now in another district. And they are building, they're currently building a high school. And so looking at what it's costing them, and so I don't think that we're that far off.
Dr. Valesky, you're talking about 470% difference.
I understand.
On an, on a 10-year spend.
I don't know if.
For 12 years.
I, I don't know if it's the same size building, Mr. Winston.
It's 360,000 square feet, which is a fair question.
Right.
What is, what's the square footage?
500,000 square feet.
500,000, you're going to add 140,000, 140,000 square feet worth, worth that? I'm still having trouble getting that. So that would be one and a half times. So that's one and a half times, that brings you 150 million to 2011. Drag that forward, that's a 3X failure. I can't, I don't believe it.
But we can certainly validate that.
Yeah, I would need that validated.
And I, I, as I'm talking to the board, we would want to validate all of these things and have the most current information before we went before the public and had this conversation and had this forum with them.
And to Mr. Hong's point.
It's a little early.
Well, that's just it, it is a little early.
Well, we just found out it's candidate's night.
But that's just not enough.
But to, to Mr. Hong's point, I don't think we're bringing the public enough data. I think we need to explore what grants, what opportunities, what funding. This is a very difficult thing to bring to the township, a 470 million float. No. I mean, I, I couldn't, I couldn't with clear conscience think that we're doing all of the due diligence, the due diligence necessary to bring this to any point of viability at this time. And I stand ready to be proven wrong, but boy, I'm missing some data here.
We're tasking them with getting some data. And I, I, I agree with your concerns. The only thing I would caution you is, and I'm not going to say I'm an expert in this, but using pre-COVID numbers like that in terms of construction and all that, and something that was built, you know, more than a decade ago.
That makes a case to wait even longer.
No, no, no. I understand, but I'm just saying, you know, it's, I understand what you're saying, that, you know, looking at Monroe and the size and all that. I just don't know that it's a completely 4X is often my point. It's, it's a huge number, absolutely.
Present life.
Mrs. Quas hasn't said anything, and I'll come back to you guys, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say, I have a fondness for the high school. One student just graduated, I've got another one there. And my mother graduated from the high school, and we had the unusual opportunity of being in the auditorium.
With Mark? No, I'm just kidding, I couldn't help it.
Probably not, although she's very youthful. But she was in the auditorium and she was absolutely astonished that it was pretty much exactly the same as when she was, she was like, why is it still familiar? Shouldn't it have? And I was like, you would think, yeah, let me take you over to see Hammerhill's facility. I can feel better. But, yeah, she was really blown away at how similar it is. My question is about the plan, especially including the wooden trusses. So we would be talking about doing construction on, what year was this building built?
57.
57, thank you. I was thinking the 60s, but buildings built in that time period sometimes have things in the walls that aren't grand. And we're talking about opening up that with children in the building?
Like we did with Churchill. It was not fun.
It is entirely possible, but there are, there are challenges to doing that. So one of the things that, that does not appear here, when you do a project of this size, and I, I unfortunately, well, fortunately or unfortunately, before I came to East Brunswick, I did a project like this, renovated a high school in stages, it took four years. But one of the things that you cannot see is you have to have an area for staging materials. You have to have an area for construction trailers. So you're going to take a footprint out of this site just for that alone. And then you talk about, we have students on this site and a lot of traffic on the site. When you do that, you're going to have lots of deliveries, you're going to have to section all this off. Whether you build a new school or not, you're going to have that. But the new school footprint comes down further to Summer Hill, you can, you can separate traffic easier there. But when you start to do the renovations, it just becomes critical about when you shut down a section of the building, about having, now you become time-sensitive. Because when you shut it down, you, you know by the next school year, you have to open it back up again because you need that space to move to the next phase. And it becomes very critical in the renovation phase about making sure you meet those timelines. Not undoable, but it's challenging. It's like taking, it's like renovating your kitchen. They always tell you, no, no, we can be in and out in two months. And one year later, you're still eating in your garage.
Yeah, I, I actually had the joy of going, going to a high school that was going through a complete rebuild, which wasn't intentional, it had burned. And being near construction, because it physically had to be kind of close, was really impactful. I can't imagine being in construction or for the staff.
And, and you know, and noise becomes an issue, but, but to the board's point, there is a severe differential between the cost of renovating and building new.
Absolutely. I think my friend's over here.
That's, that's, that's what I was going to say, the thing I keep wrestling with. So my older son went to Churchill during the two years we renovated it and we didn't build new, which means he attended it while we were renovating it. And it was somewhat of a nightmare for students and staff and parents. And my younger son went to Hammerhill during the two years that we built new alongside. There were issues with that, too, with going to school and the construction site, like, like Kether said. But like Jeff brought up and Lori and a couple of others, it's a big price difference. So we need, we need all that data, which you are, I know, determined to get, Dr. V. But Jeff, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to shake my head while you were, while you were speaking in terms of doubting what you were saying. But to my recollection, Bernie, the referendum, the CARE referendum failed. the CARE referendum failed. It did not carry. And we funded that first 20, whatever million, through a lease purchase?
That was for which?
The high school. Remember the CARE referendum?
Yes.
That was right before I got on the board, so that would have been
That was through
98, 99?
Yeah, that was a commissioner-approved lease purchase.
Right. So we, so it was, it was, that's what I said, it was funded differently. I'm sorry. It's finance isn't my, isn't my thing. It was funded.
Fair enough. I mean, I'm talking about just simple valuation, simple valuation, not necessarily where the money came from.
But I wanted, I wanted to explain, because I don't want to be rude.
No.
So it was, it was a different, a different sort of funding.
It was a different process.
But it's a big price difference, and I'm really glad that you are bringing us this opportunity to bring it to the community, Dr. V. It's not just our decision.
But I also would, would want from the board, what is the, what's the timeframe? That, knowing we have to collect information, but is there, is there a target the board would like me to shoot for? For, starting having the community forums?
October?
Are we talking about, are we talking about later this year, like in October, November?
Before the holidays.
It's when you gather the data. I mean, it's
Right.
Well, yeah, we don't want a short change, but you could, I would
But ideally, this fall would be
You gather the data and then
Yeah, but we also, we don't want to go into next year.
No, we don't.
But we also, we have the clock ticking on the TCU's.
I'm so sorry.
We have the clock ticking on the TCU's.
You have four solid, well, you have four solid years left right now.
If you think you can do it October, November, before the holidays, season starts.
We will talk to the architects, look at the numbers, see if we can collect some information. We'll start working on that.
Work overtime, seven days a week, 24/7, and do nothing but this.
You're ready, Dr. V?
I thought that was the schedule already. Okay.
All right, anything else?
I have a little something. One more thing, I can also show them. But anyway, so when we bought a piece of wood four or five years ago, it was like five bucks. The same piece of wood is $27 now, right? So I don't think we have any recourse, because everything's just gone up exponentially, you know, inflation, things like that. So I agree with your point, Mr. Winston, 100%. But, you know, I think that it's not our fault that everything's going up. And what if we wait five more years, or I know we got four more years left, but what if we wait four more years? It might be 600, you know, it might be even more. So nothing goes down. Everything just goes up. So in my opinion, you know.
Thank you.
I'm just throwing it out there. Everything's more expensive. Don't be I agree with you, Dr. V.
Thank you very much. So, speaking of the high school, our very own high school senior, who's got five more days, right, until you are in that building that we're talking about so animatedly?
Yeah.
I realize you don't have much of a report, but any, any news, anything you've done, high school-related, college tours, anything you want to, anything you want to tell us?
Yesterday was a sophomore orientation at the high school, and I was there as one of the senior guides. It was nice to see all the new faces that would be there and to introduce them to all the academics and all the athletic opportunities that are offered at the high school. And it was also just nice to see my friends again after summer.
Terrific.
Chris, tell the truth. You guided students, right, for sophomore orientation? Did you tell them there was a pool in the high school?
Uh, or
Mr. President warned us.
So we do have one now.
I, I think, I think that we should actually have some of the board members, since we're all, not all, but the alumni, maybe we should get to come back and do the tours with them. Wouldn't that be fun?
No, to your point, it's the same school.
Right, it is the same school. I know Mark just left. But other Mark, I'm just, what do you think? I could pass as a high school senior, don't you think? It wasn't that long ago I was in those halls. Come on, Chris. Right? I could hang out.
Don't, don't answer any of that.
Don't answer, don't answer. You're right. Well, I will look forward, I hope you have a wonderful start to your senior year. This is going to be a great year for you, and I will look forward to it, as well as my comrades up here, hearing some more exciting things about the opening of school from your perspective in a few weeks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Now we have a meeting.
Now we have a meeting. It's a meeting within a meeting. It's the marathon. So the fun part brings you to the good of the cause for the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. In order to permit fair and orderly expression of such comments, the Board should provide a period for public comment at every meeting of the Board. You will be limited to three minutes duration in your comments. And I always like to remind everyone, this is your time to talk to the Board, not with the Board. So please do not mistake silence on our part as not hearing you or caring about your concerns. Anything that needs additional follow-up, we will ask you to leave your contact information to the lovely ladies in the front, and we will have answers and follow-up for you. That being said, now that you've listened to us speak so animatedly for the last couple of hours, is there anyone out there that would like to speak to the Board this evening? Yes, please, come on up. And if you could just state your name and address for the public, please, or the record, excuse me.
I'm Rose Cruz, 22 Perry Road. I'm a parent of two boys, four and six. One is a classified student entering first grade, and one is an ELA, that's preschool. I respect and admire everyone and appreciate everything you've been doing all these years for our schools. I am here tonight to talk about CPAG. It's the Special Education Parent Advisory Group. This, this group is mandated by the state of New Jersey to exist, but has no budget whatsoever. We gather input from caregivers of students with 504s and IEPs, and work closely with the Special Education Director, Louise Sultano-Larocco, and we turn that input into action. She and her team are challenged with accommodating the increasing needs of almost 1,900 students, which is almost 20% of the total population. And yet they're always open and responsive and willing to help whenever they're asked. We hope to return the favor this year by helping each other navigate the disparate support systems, making use of all the state and local resources that are available to them, sharing insight into the various aspects of special education that we all learn as we go. We have at least one parent liaison at each school who will be in contact with the principals and child study teams at each one. We'll be available at back-to-school night for new parents. The areas that we need most improvement, according to our latest survey, are parent-teacher communication, family engagement, and social-emotional learning. Addressing these topics is critical, especially for our youngest students, whose development was profoundly impacted by the stress and isolation of the pandemic. Research shows that prioritizing these will lead to greater academic achievement. This year, we'll continue to collaborate with the district and find solutions that don't necessarily require significant funding to be effective. We are working with Louise and her team to update the CPAG section of EBnet.org to make it easier for parents to find out about us and the important things they need to know about you. I noticed there were a dozen or so team members on the child study teams that are splitting their time between different buildings. I hope there is a plan in the future to have a full-time child study team at each school, because these kids are definitely going to need it. And now we know that we need to translate our flyers into Arabic, Chinese, and Spanish. We have a WhatsApp community with groups for each school that parents can join. Thank you. And we could really use your support this year in achieving some of our ambitious goals. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Rose. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the Board this evening? Yes, come on up. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. Darcona. I'm a parent and also a candidate for the Board in elections this year. Great presentations, very long meeting, a lot of information, so I'll keep it real brief. Getting to the first part, Dr. Bowley, great presentation. There was conversation about a ruler, and there's conversation, I think you mentioned, the grading system or the measuring of that is constantly changing. And there's challenges when you have new tests and all that. I do hear Mr. Hung and what he's saying, and I think there's merit to what he's saying. But the question I have is, is there something that we, the district, have in terms of measuring our own students? You know, we're looking at the state, we're looking at other metrics, and we're looking at standardized tests, and that's a moving target. Do we have something internal that we can utilize also to help us gauge where we were pre-pandemic, where we are today, and the direction that we're moving in? I don't need an answer today, but I'm looking for an answer. And I do appreciate everything and the effort that you put in. The kids have, and all of us, have had challenges that we've had to overcome. And the fact that it's taken two years, it's hard to believe, but it's understandable at the same time. Moving on to the conversation about the school, I think we're all in agreement between the two different options that we want to put our best foot forward. But pre-pandemic, post-pandemic, prices have changed. First question I have is, is there anyone on the ad hoc committee who is a construction professional? Because I think that would be a relevant thing to have. The next question I have is, with regards to this architect, I have absolutely no confidence in this architect. You look at the last project that he was involved in, the $4 million AC unit going on top of the high school. He designed plans which were not even feasible. Had to go back to the drawing board because structures were in place that weren't even part of his plans. So the contractor couldn't finish his work. That causes delays, that causes other issues. When we get into projects of this caliber, do we put these out to bid? Or are we just going to our district architect? And that should not be at all. Project, construction projects, I mean, if you're talking about a $50,000 project, okay, fine. We're going to our district architect. But a half-million-dollar job makes no sense to me. Why it's not put out to bid, why it's not going to be put out to bid.
Time.
The other thing, uh,
Time, just a comment, it's time.
All right. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. If you'd like to follow up with Janet or Karen.
I can forward my questions to her?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Do I see Mr. Levitt walking to the podium?
You do.
Okay.
Jack Levitt for Springfield Road. I'm here tonight as the president of the East Brunswick Education Foundation, and I want to let everybody know that early, early bear registration is still open for the EB Bear Crawl, first annual or first ever 5K run and fun run. It's going to be November 19th over at the Community Arts Center. Everybody here looks very fit and able to do some form of 5K. So I wanted to give you all the opportunity to register early and save some money. It all goes to a really good cause. So the running store in North Brunswick looks forward to seeing you if you need new sneakers, but I look forward to seeing you all there on the 19th of November.
Hey, some of us ran all three miles plus of the veterans' run. So you will see me there, and I will run all 3.1 or 2 miles.
Can you dance instead?
You can dance all the way. I told Dr. Valeski he could ride a scooter if he wants to.
Yeah, I wanted it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So whatever you would like to do, as long as you do 5K of it, I look forward to seeing you. Everybody's asking me if I'm going to be running. I'm going to hold the microphone that day, so I won't be running, but I will cheer each one of you on. Thank you.
Hold the microphone.
Yes, yes, we will have massage chairs.
Just a reminder, this is the public's opportunity to speak.
I'm so sorry. I know, me too. I apologize, because I do not like to break rules, and I just broke my own rule because, you know, the whole running thing. So, thank you very much, Mr. Levitt. And hopefully you will see lots of people. I'm sure you have lots already, but hopefully you'll see lots of board members signed up for the Education Foundation, which is so important to this district. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the Board this evening? No, okay. Then I will close the public portion. And because of the late hour and the marathon meeting, I am going to ask for a motion on the entire agenda this evening.
Some of
Second.
Okay, so move by Mrs. Becker, second by Mr. Winston. We are going to have any discussion you would like on the entire agenda. If there is no more discussion left in you, that is fine. I just want to remind a few board members under Financial Services this evening that you should be abstaining if you see your name. That was all.
Just on that line.
Just on the one travel item. The line item. Yes. Now, is there any discussion on anything else on the agenda this evening? No. No, I didn't think so. Okay. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker?
Is that it?
Yeah.
Just you.
I was just checking to see if there was something you had to abstain on. Mr. Corangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes, with an abstention on Financial Services number eight.
Noted. Mr. Cummings?
Yes, same abstention, number nine.
Noted. Ms. Gwass?
Yes.
Mr. Hung?
Yes, with abstention from Financial Services item number 10.
Noted. Mr. Winston?
Same with abstention Financial's 13.
I'm sorry, could you clarify same? Was that a yes?
A yes, and same abstention in Finance under 13 with a yes.
Noted. And President Lex?
Yes, with an abstention Financial Services number 11.
Noted. Motion passes.
Motion carries, bringing us to new and/or old business committee reports, information items, and for the good of the cause for the Board. I just want to actually say good luck. I know, give me one second. But, Chris, I'm a little disappointed in one thing you left out, because I forgot until I saw my notes here. Mrs. Gwass and I got to be Bears again and went to the pep rally for the football team. Hey, you know, so I just, I wasn't sure if you got to go to that, but I'm hoping that there'll be more. We had a really fun time. It was really fun. They gave out, if anybody got to see any of it, they gave out, the parents gave out the football players' jerseys as part of it. It was really nice. Down through the, and it was terrific. And they had, a member of their family was able to present them with their jersey.
Yeah, my only thought was, I wish it was bigger and had more teams included in the food truck. It was nice.
Yes. But I'll expect that in your next roll. So, you guys?
I'd like to talk about Joanne Magistro. I know a lot of you didn't know her, didn't serve with her. I was on the board that hired her. She was the third superintendent I worked with. But I, I knew Joanne even before I was on the board. When I was the PTA president, I was on committees with her. Somebody said to me recently that Joanne taught me how to be a good board member. And I, I said, yes, but the people on the board at that time were all about tough love, and I got a very good education even before Joanne was superintendent. But what Joanne did for me, she taught me how to be a parent in this district to as a board member, because it's really hard. She, it didn't matter if it was trivial or something really. She, she looked out for me. She knew I was the only board member for a long time with young children on the board. She helped me figure it all out. She's such a class act and really so smart. And man, did she have a wicked sense of humor. She would make this face when, when somebody was talking, and she didn't understand what they'd say, she'd kind of look at me and like cross her eyes. And I, it was everything I could do not to laugh. She also taught me it was okay to laugh and to be emotional, and that just because you're sitting up here doesn't mean that you're not a human being, because she was very much a human being. A human being who also did a spectacular job of running this district. She's missed by so many. And that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Becker. I do apologize. I did mention that we would be talking about Joanne at the end, although I realize that Vicki and I are the only ones on the Board that actually served as board members with her. But if anyone else has anything on Joanne, I know Mr. Corangelo would like to.
Say that you taught me how to be a good board member, so Joanne's influence on you, you gave to me. Because how many times have we had conversations together? No, but you taught me, you know.
I'm not done.
Also, I'm hosting a DBDF fundraiser at my school. I did one at my home this past year and we raised, you know, about $350. So we're doing one at my school for massage. So my school's on Halloween, September 9th. So I expect Dr. V and everyone we know to be at my school for fundraiser for the Jaxx organization. So if you want more info to get massage and stretch or whatever, which participates, just reach out to me. And I have one more thing, because today was the biggest voice I've had. I want to pass these out, pass these all the way down. So as you guys know, I use the field constant and I brought this up many times. So I notice the east, the East Brunswick on our scoreboard is gone. I don't like that. And the entrance to the field, just pass those down. The entrance to the, because I don't think that you guys have gone to the field in the same way that I do maybe. But what I'm noticing is that the field is just, the entrance way just doesn't look like anything. It looks like a kind of mess. So I don't know if I need to make a motion, I don't know, but I think this entrance area needs to change in a way where it represents us as Bears. It represents our sports teams different, but I mean, the grass is gone, the cement is terrible. It just doesn't look like anything has ever been done there. So I've been saying this a bunch of times, if anyone wants to, you know, if they want to make a motion to beautify that area or.
That's a motion.
This needs to have some thoughts.
No, I appreciate your concern and I'm going to say that we refer this to the building and grounds committee.
All right, so let's have that discussion because when I walk in there, man, it just doesn't look like anything. The guards can't sit in there, it's all destroyed.
Absolutely, I understand your concern.
I'm not trying to make any issue other than helping our district work.
Absolutely.
Creating whatever, or more Bear Lake.
Was there an extra one of these?
I'll give you mine. I have, I don't think we want.
Don't tell Tim that. We're wasting trees. Mr. Sizmar.
Vicki, your words about Dr. Magistro were beautiful. I just wanted to add one thing to that. She was ahead of her time with school security. Mr. Natalicio can attest to this. Back in the late 90s, when, pre-Columbine, pre-all this, you know, her vision was school security and to protect the children. And, you know, I mean, maybe nationwide, she had to be one of the first ones to, and it's grown to, you know, Mr. Natalicio, director there of security, to where today East Brunswick is the model for keeping the kids safe. And it all started with Dr. Magistro before anybody was thinking about it. Doors were unlocked. Schools were, you know, more porous than a sieve. I mean, it was just, so I just wanted to add that. I mean, you know, to have that kind of vision and be some, think about something about children that no one else at the time pretty much was thinking about. That's what resonated with me with her, you know. So I just wanted to add that point.
Thank you, actually. Yes.
Well, she literally wrote a book on it. She literally wrote, Bernie, remember we, she, we did this thing for the state where it was like a scenario for any disaster you could possibly think of. I'm picturing in my mind, it was like a yellow flipbook, right?
She developed it, every, every scenario you could possibly think of, and the state used it as a model. I can see it. It was like a yellow. I'm sorry?
Can I speak on that real quick?
Oh, okay. Of course.
You know, I wouldn't be here without Dr. Magistro. So 1998, she came to the police department when I was an officer and she said, I want to do lockdowns. For perspective, the state said and mandated in 2011 that we're doing lockdowns. 1998 was pre-Columbine. That was her vision. And we came up with the plans and the crisis plans and the flipped arch, and we were doing lockdowns for them. So talk about, we're 25 years in doing lockdowns in this district. That's credit to her. When I retired, I didn't plan to come work here. She insisted. And she said, you're, I turned it down three times. And she got her way, like you said, she would get her way. And she has a legacy here. And you guys supported that and we grew from there. So that's my piece on Dr. Magistro. Everything you said is accurate. She really brought security and many other great things to this district. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Natalicio. Oh, Mrs. Gwass.
I wanted to piggyback off what you said about the pep rally. And Mark, my viewpoint is a little different on the stadium. I'm a sports mom times several and I feel like I live here, I live at the high school. I just live there. It's very nice. I enjoy it there a lot. And every, since COVID especially, but every time I'm at the stadium and the line from the snack bar is so far back and there are students everywhere and there are visiting families from the other team, last, the last one, the pep rally and the scrimmage, both sides, the stands were filled. And I, I know they do tromp on the lawn, but I'm grateful to see kids there to tromp on a lawn. It's packed and I like to see the teams have that kind of support. And it's like other things, you know, when we have wear and tear on the fields because the kids are using them, that's pretty much everything that we hope for. We want them to be out there being athletes. So there's another football game coming. I believe it's a greenout. Is that right? For the Bear Den?
I might have to check.
Okay. Yes. We'll coach you before. So that's Friday night and everybody's real excited. And I also wanted to say I attended an orientation at Memorial. I know. And I was just really grateful because I didn't expect it. But there were teachers there who had volunteered, they were just in, and they led the kids on a scavenger hunt. And my five-year-old was very, very intimidated. We had said going in, she was asking that morning, do I really have to go to orientation? Like, what happens if I don't go? We had made a deal, I would hold her hand the whole time. And the minute the teachers came in and were so warm and said they were going to take all the kids on a scavenger hunt to get to know the school, she was just off. And since then, it's not, do I have to go to orientation? She wakes me every morning and very early to ask if today is the day she gets to go to school. And I keep saying, not yet, please go back to bed, but it's every single day. It's very nice. The other thing I wanted to say was such a credit to Anne Marie Gilbert that we have a waiting list of 30 students waiting to get into ELA. Same child went to ELA for several years and I cannot say enough good things about it. I wish it had been in the elementary schools when we went, so she could have gotten into Memorial earlier. But I think it's both a wonderful credit to the program, that there are that many people waiting to get in, and I really wish we had the space for all of them so they could all take advantage of it. It's just amazing. I think that's everything. Thank you.
That was actually another program under Joanne and Trish, right, Vicki?
I'm sorry.
Bringing our ELA that came under Joanne and Trish, the duca.
Yeah, and it's.
That was their baby.
It's funny because one, one of the committees I, Joanne put together for, for parents and she had a lot of PTA people there was on redoing orientations for parents and students in the district. Sorry, it all, just reminds me of.
I like your, I'm laughing since you and I sent our kids that we met when our kids were babies at Memorial off to college. And the same thing for your little one now, when you talk about how, you know, they're, they're off and running. It's kind of the same thing for college, right? We drop the kids off and we're, you know, holding on, holding on. They're like, bye-bye, and they're off and running, so. It's good. You're doing, you're doing well. Dropping one off at college and starting one at Memorial, so you're very like, okay, here we go, it's full circle. It is. Yes. So, Mr. Hong.
Very quick. So I went to Hamishut for the orientation, is real orientation. I can sense parents was very anxious, students was really excited. But I just wanted the community to know that Hamishut is in good hand. The new, our new principal, he did a very good job, at least the first day. And so the community should be very happy for that. That's all.
All right, we're all talked out tonight. It's a great meeting. All right, well, then I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn. Okay, there you go. Any discussion? No more discussion. All in favor? Aye. Host, motion carries. Thank you. Good night and good luck with school opening.